We'll do it for the people.
Your fault.
Okay, we're going to start the meeting 7:04.
Thank you.
We're going to do the pledge again since we have our administrators and everybody here. So I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. I would just ask everyone for their patience with me as I transition to my new role here. So this is our January 10 regular meeting. We just had our organizational meeting, and if Mr. Costello would please call roll.
Mr. Burganski?
Here.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Here.
Dr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Manning?
Here.
Mrs. Troutman?
Here.
I'd like to begin just reading a passage for you to give you some thoughts on how we process and make our decision-making. So welcome to our January 10, 2022, regular meeting of the Kinston Local School Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, each board member received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item via the Electronic Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and the treasurer for information concerning agenda items and to request additional information if needed. As a result, voting at the meeting may appear rushed and without adequate discussion. This is because the board has thoroughly reviewed the agenda items, done all the research, and arrives at this meeting ready to vote. The agenda is available for public view via the district website three days prior to each board meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. There are two opportunities for public participation during this meeting as indicated in agenda items designated as public participation. The first is the hearing of the public on agenda items, where the board will listen to comments from the public on any item on tonight's agenda. This is at the beginning of the meeting so that the board can hear from the public prior to any voting. The second opportunity is hearing from the public on non-agenda items. During this portion of the meeting, the board will hear from the public on any topic relevant to the business of the district. All public comment follows the guidelines included in our board policy, which is on this agenda. We'll proceed then to number three, which is approval of our minutes. We have two sets of minutes, the work session from December 7 and the regular meeting from December 13. Can I have a motion to approve these minutes? Beth, a second?
I'll second.
Tom, second. Mr. Costello, do you want to call roll? All right, is there any questions? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any questions or corrections on the minutes? Mr. Costello?
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Do you want me to do board reports first, sir, your appreciation? Do the board reports.
Okay. Next, under board reports, we're going to do board reports to see if anyone, if Finance Committee, KCAC, or anyone has a report. I know I have legislative, but I'll go ahead and go last, so anybody have any reports?
I do not.
Jen and Dennis and myself, we went to the Public Sunshine CLE event to get the education on the sunshine law. Either one of yous want to update on that?
So I actually had it a ton of twice because the first time it ran late and I had to leave. So I did the whole thing all over again. So I actually had it almost two full sessions on sunshine law. So I think I'm pretty confident in what it is. But basically, just went through and told us what we're allowed to talk about in executive session, which is the thing that I was more concerned about, just because I've never been in an executive session before. So that was interesting. I think the takeaway from that was that it's important to let people know why we're going into executive session and to be not completely vague, because that is a violation of sunshine law. A lot of the FOIA requests they talked about, which I'm very familiar with through my job, just stuff like that. I mean, it was interesting. I think the school board piece of it, the presenter didn't really have a lot of information on. She wasn't very in tune with our particular questions that we had. So I did reach out to Attorney General's Office to ask them if they can do a specific sunshine law for school boards. And they're looking into whether or not that's something that they can do. But I think a lot of it's kind of vague as far as school boards. So hopefully, they can get us a little bit more direction.
I've noticed from doing it in the past that there were some things that have tweaked and changed because of case law, that things have been litigated with it, that they have fine tuned to change things a little bit since I last took it. But I did, I asked a lot of questions, and they wouldn't answer specific school board questions. They wouldn't answer it, which was kind of disappointing.
And I do think, I agree with you. I do think a lot of it is litigation-driven. I think they don't really know the answer until somebody actually initiates the litigation, which is not really what you want to do. It's nice to have the answer before you kind of get into a situation where you have to seek legal counsel. So I think the takeaway from sunshine law is, you know, it's there to protect the public, to produce records that public should have access to, and then to keep back the exceptions to FOIA requests. And there's only like four things that will protect a record. So it's not as broad as I think people think it is. So it's interesting.
So the Ohio School Boards Association has a pretty concise document on sunshine laws as they pertain to school boards. So maybe I'll find that, and maybe we can get it in the next packet.
I actually bought a book from them once when we were at Capitol Conference.
I think I have that book as well.
I have that too.
But the like little three-page flyers.
But see, case law has changed some of that, though. Some of that stuff that was in there that I had has changed since I've been, since I bought that book.
So we'll get the OSBA document out to folks, because it's a nice, concise, and it's 100%, you know, focused on school boards. I'll find that and give it to you guys.
Okay, my last legislative report, so I turn it over to Jen, since she will not be the legislative liaison. Senate Bill 166, the governor signed that into law, and it establishes student pathways for career success grant programs and requires the state to create a program that establishes financial incentives for Ohio businesses to provide work-related learning experiences for students enrolled in career technical programs. House Bill 169, the governor signed it to law, and that's a vehicle to disperse the federal pandemic aid dollars to schools. House Bill 29 was signed into law, which legalizes and regulates and taxes sports gaming. However, prohibits betting on an athletic event if a player is under 18. And 98% of the profits from that go to K-12 education. And those are the only pieces of legislation I have to highlight today. Any other reports? Finance Committee?
Finance, you got, and Paul's going to expand upon it, so I won't get into details. But it's the House Bill 169. Paul, you are going to talk about that a little bit?
I'll be happy to, yes, sir.
All right. So I'll let him do that, but that's the only update I have. But he'll do a more thorough job of it.
I'm not going to go that far.
You know it pretty good.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy.
Great. I just want, underneath the board report, before I talk a little bit more about the board commendation, before we go into that, I do want to do a clarification, and I want to bring up this point of clarification. Mrs. Gaskins, who serves on our legislative committee, pointed out that in Ohio Revised Code, Section 3792.04, it was Item B2, "Public Schools and State Institutions of Higher Education", there's a prohibition against mandatory vaccines and discrimination. That conflicted with the Ohio Department of Health Isolation and Quarantine Guideline Flowchart, which we had been using from the Ohio Department of Health. So we worked in consultation with Joga County Public Health Department, and we are posting their quarantine and isolation in school guidelines. And this is to clarify the quarantine protocol guidelines regardless of the vaccination status. And so this information is now posted on our website, and that's being used by both Lake and Joga Health Departments so that it is in compliance with that Ohio Revised Code. So I wanted to follow up with everyone for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for that question. Oftentimes, through this pandemic, there's been conflicting information from different parties, and so we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're in compliance with that Ohio Revised Code. So thank you for that. And then if I can, as far as board reports, I'd like to move into commendations, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So, school board members exemplify local voice and decision-making in education. And if you know anything about school boards, they volunteer hundreds of hours and an immeasurable amount of energy to ensure that our schools provide the best education possible for the children in our community. For their dedication, we take this opportunity to show them our appreciation each January, which has been designated as School Board Recognition Month. And we want to recognize the hard work and dedication of these individuals who represent the Kinston community. I ask that our community please take the time to express your appreciation to our school board members and thank them for caring about our children's education. We certainly applaud them for their vision, their voice, and their advocacy of our students. And tonight, we would like to recognize our outgoing board members, Mrs. Beth Ward for her eight years of service, and Mr. Bill Timmons for his 29 years of service. We are most appreciative of their insight, their ideas, their advocacy for our students in public education over these years. And we are truly grateful to these outgoing members who have guided Kinston, dedicating their significant time and energy to help chart our past, the present, and future as Kinston continues to grow and thrive. And we are forever grateful for their service. And so we were slated to host a reception earlier today, but because of COVID, that certainly is something that we have postponed till later in the spring. But nonetheless, we certainly express our appreciation for their many years of service to our district. So we did want to take that opportunity to at least recognize them here at this meeting. We also want to recognize and thank Dr. Beth Kraus for her 13 years of service, and Mrs. Nasa Gaskins, and Mr. Tom Manning for their seven years of service. We appreciate their consistent and thoughtful leadership and their perspective to our district as they continue to guide its future, so thank you for that. Tonight, we want to congratulate and welcome our two newest members of the Board of Education, Mr. Dennis Burganski and Mrs. Jennifer Troutman. We are grateful and excited to have these individuals join the board as they bring their talents, their expertise, and perspectives to the district. And we certainly look forward to working with them as we believe we are all stronger together. On behalf of our Kinston administrative team, I'd like to present each of you with a personalized reusable Kinston travel mug that will replace the Kinston water bottles that you typically see on the tables here that are provided at each board meeting. And so I want to explain that a little bit. Let this token remind you of our appreciation and esteem as you use it at each meeting. You'll see that with our mask, I tend to, you know, have to have a little bit of those water bottles. But this gift affirms the Go Green and Renewable Energy initiatives that we uphold in the district. At Kinston, one of our district goals is innovation and Go Green as we learn to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Our high school has been nationally recognized as a green ribbon school for providing effective environmental and sustainability education and reducing their environmental impact. From our earliest learners, beginning their educational journey, students collect and gather and recycle paper weekly. At Timmons Elementary, they recently added two plastic recycling bins outside, and these practices continue at the intermediate, middle, and high school, with students also reducing their plastic waste by bringing their reusable water bottles to school to fill at the hydration stations, water filling stations. And then in partnership with our Nutrition Services Department, a composting program has benefited the high schools, giving garden that benefits local food banks. We'd like to thank Mrs. Gaskins for her donation of the water collection rain barrel, which was also added to that given garden. And recently, as part of our partnership with the Schlecki Center, our administrative team had the opportunity to hear from Milken &amp; Company, which is a global manufacturer of performance textiles, on the importance of environmental responsibility for our world. We're very proud of our campus, that it has become an outdoor classroom where real-world learning is available from the arboretum, the butterfly garden, to the community trails. And these initiatives foster responsible global citizens. And again, we thank our Board of Education members for their service, their integrity, their honor, and their commitment to our students' future. And so this is a small token that was actually done by our high school, the hub, and our innovation, as a token for our board members, and hope that you will use them as part of our Go Green initiatives at each of the board meeting as a reminder of the work and your support of our students here. And so we certainly thank our Board of Education members. And I would like to recognize each of you with not only the certificate, but then this reusable mug that, much like your name placards here, can be used at our board meetings. So thank you again for all that you do for our students. Mr. Patrizi, if you can help me pass these out, that would be great. And this is for Mr. Burganski. And Mrs. Gaskins?
Thank you kindly.
For you, congratulations.
Thank you. Those are very nice.
And Dr. Kraus?
Thank you.
And if I could have the audience engage me in a round of applause for the work of these members. As Mrs. Gaskins stated, the work up here as board members, the meetings sometimes seem very quick as we go through this, but there are so many hours spent behind the scenes, whether it's reading documents, whether it's working on committees, whether it's phone calls back and forth, just really working with our community, for our students and that. And so we really appreciate your time and your dedication to not only our students every day, but certainly the Kinston community, and then to our teachers and our leadership team. So thank you very much for that.
We thank you. These are absolutely lovely, and it means so much more that the students made them and the amazing things that they do at the hub. We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly. So that is a commendation, so I think we need to vote on that then? If someone would make a motion for the commendation?
Some of them.
Beth, a second? Dennis? We'll call Mr. Costello.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. Next on the agenda is a hearing on public on agenda items. I don't have any, do you, Paul? Or does anybody have anything that they want to say on agenda items?
I do not. I have an item on a non-agenda item at the back end of the meeting.
Okay.
That I have, sort of sent electronic. But I have nothing for agenda items.
Moving on, we'll move on to financials. Seven, we have 7A through H. If I can have a motion on that?
All motion.
Tom.
Tom, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
If I may, I just wanted to allude to a couple of things, if I could. First and foremost, you'll notice that the spending plan reports, which you typically see every month, is not on the agenda. That would be the December spending plan. In my update to you, I shared that we closed the calendar year, you know, in our typical fashion, but the board meeting was so early. The actual spending plan reports are done, but the narrative, that six or seven pages that I do, was not complete. So you'll see that in February, along with Januaries as well, so you'll get them both. I did want to also bring to your attention the tax budget, which is an annual thing that must be done. It is a formality with respect to schools. The tax budget's based on a calendar year, although our school is on a fiscal year, so it kind of overlaps, so it doesn't line up with all of our financial data, but it's a requirement that we do. Our tax budget, after you, if you approve it this evening, will go to the county auditor. And then we have a tax budget hearing, I believe it's February, I want to say 22nd. These tax budget hearings are typically eight to 10 minutes apiece, and so more than likely, Mr. Patrizi and I will attend that, along with the other treasurers in the county, and we'll do a tax budget hearing. You're also required to hold a tax budget hearing in the district, which we did today at 4 o'clock. That was announced in a local paper on December 30, which is also a requirement of the Ohio Revised Code. The tax budget hearing, as I mentioned, was at 4 o'clock today. And Mike asked a whole lot of questions, and I answered them for him, so.
I have to tell you, I am so disappointed in myself. I was so going to show up at that meeting, and I forgot to put it on my calendar, to be the first person that ever went to them.
The first one that, in all of my years as being a treasurer, which is now 28, I want to say the first one I did in Chardon, so my first year, was. I think every year thereafter, at Chardon, Fairport Harbor, and South Euclid was, with the exception of Mr. Patrizi, was not attended. So that's okay. It's a...
I'll try and surprise you next year.
I'm looking forward to somebody surprising me one year, absolutely. Keeping me on my toes with that. And then to elaborate a little bit on what Mr. Manning had said during my update, I will speak a little bit about our current financial position and what effects House Bill 129 will have potentially on us at this time, related to additional extra funding.
I'd also like to thank the members of our community and the different organizations that graciously supported us through donations for our school, our programs, and our students. That is much appreciated, and we thank you for your donations to the board. We're ready for roll call.
Okay. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eight is certified personnel. We have A and A and B, if someone would like to make a motion on the personnel? Who is that?
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
A second?
I'll second.
Beth? Any discussion? We'll call.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
You said D through G.
A and B.
A and B.
Oh, A and B, I couldn't hear you from over there.
That's okay. Number A, A and B.
Okay.
Did you say yes? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Dennis? And Mrs., I'm sorry, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. Next, Section 9, classified personnel. We're going to take this in three parts. The first part we're going to do is A through D. If I can have a motion for A through D?
Some moved.
Beth, second?
I'll second.
Tom? Any discussion for A through D? Want to call the roll?
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. Next, we're going to do 9F. If I can have a motion for 9F?
Some moved.
Beth?
I'll second.
Jen, second? Any discussion? Want to call the roll?
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
abstain.
And Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. Now we're going to move on to 9G. If I can have a motion for 9G?
I'll move.
Jen, a second?
I'll second.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Tom? Any discussion? Want to call the roll?
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
abstain.
And Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. Now we'll move on to number 10, the supplemental contracts. And that is just A. Can I have a motion for that?
Some moved.
Beth, a second?
I'll second.
Tom? Any discussion? Want to call the roll?
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
No.
Mrs. Troutman?
No.
And Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. We have nothing under exempt personnel. Business operations is Jeremy, am I here? Jeremy McDivitt, Mr. McDivitt? He's here. Jeremy, do you have anything you want to report or anything?
Not just that.
Okay. 13, teaching and learning. We have just one, it's A. Can I have a motion?
Some moved.
Beth, a second?
I'll second.
No, you go.
Second.
Tom, second. Any questions or discussion? Call the roll.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. Under B, we have the first reading for the curriculum course for the Personal Financial Literacy Program, and that was, Senate Bill 1 was a passed legislation that requires us to have that class for graduates starting in 2026, if I'm correct. Is that correct, Katie? 2026? The incoming freshman for next year. So that's just the first reading on the course. Nothing on special ed or old business. We move on to new business. We have...
Can I ask a question about the course?
Sure.
And I don't expect an answer now, but Nancy, maybe in your next update, it said it was going to be a nine-week course. I just want to have an understanding of how that gets you into our block scheduling. So if you could just give me a little follow-up, that would be appreciated.
I asked Katie that. I don't know if you're comfortable answering that, because I asked that question today.
I'm willing to wait for the answer, that's fine.
Okay? Okay.
If you could, we'll send it out to all the board.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, it's a good question. I know a couple of us asked that today. New business, professional trip. Can I have a motion?
Wait, do we vote on these? I thought these were information-only.
No. The first reading? No.
No, not the first reading, the trips. Do we vote on trips? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I want to say yes.
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 Okay.
Yeah, I'm in the past.
Okay.
I'll move.
Jen?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Beth? Any discussion? Want to call the roll?
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Burganski?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaskins?
Yes. Next, we move to 17, which is a hearing on the public on non-agenda items. As you'll see now, we've included in our, on the agenda, our policy on public participation at board meetings. So we have the guidelines that we follow for this. I have not received anything. Paul, do you have?
I do. I have one, received the electronic public comment card from, I'm going to get this right, Marla, I promise. Marla Zwinki?
Yeah, do you want me to come up there or just from my seat, or what's easier?
I'm not sure if that's, is that mic? Yes, we would like you to...
If you could please come to the mic.
Yeah, if you want to come here. And if you could please start with stating your name and your address, and then go ahead and...
Sure.
And we have a three-minute time period, okay?
Hi, my name is Marla Zwinki. I live at 18040 Cinnabar Trail in Auburn, Ohio. Happy New Year, and congratulations to our two new board members, Ms. Troutman and Mr. Burganski, and continuing board member, Ms. Kraus. We are all excited for the opportunity to work with you, knowing that together, as a cohesive team, a cohesive team, the board will make sound decisions on the educational welfare of all students, and establish effective policies based in logic. My first point of business is that I, along with a large group of families, many of whom are here tonight, have established a Kinston Parent Task Force. While we recognize that you already have such bodies as the PTO and KCAC, and many of us currently serve on those, or have served on those, the main goal of this group is to help maintain staffing at Kinston during the Omicron surge. What we have done is this: We've set up a nonprofit business account through a local bank, and are actively encouraging donations from parents who want to help. The money raised will be used to purchase N95, KN95, and KF94 masks for faculty, staff, and students. We also hope to purchase rapid COVID testing kits when they are not readily available from Jogga Public Health or our local libraries. These donations will be dropped off at school buildings as they become available. Of course, it is up to any individual to choose whether or not they want to wear these specific masks. But the fact that they will be available, free of charge, gives an extra layer of protection and comfort to our teachers, who are already doing so much. Just as we are expected to send our students in with boxes of tissues, wipes, and baggies at the beginning of each school year, we are extending our efforts here. And second, with regards to Timmons, KIS, and Kinston Middle School, we are requesting that lunchroom policies be reviewed. For those of us who have received calls that our little ones have been exposed to COVID-19, the common thread that is happening seems to be, that is happening at lunch. Can lunch periods be moved to the gymnasiums? If foldable tables are needed to be purchased so that students can space out further, our parent task force can provide those. Perhaps it may be considered a logistical nightmare, but if there are ways that we can help facilitate this, we will. In closing, we want you to know that there is an entire community of parents out here who are willing to give their time and finances to help in any way needed. We have people power. Please let us help you. Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Is there anybody else who would like to testify? Okay, hearing done, we're going to go on to Treasurers' Reports. Paul?
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year to you all. Hope everybody's doing well. I will be brief. I'd like to expound a bit on what Mr. Manning had mentioned related to House Bill 169, which is ESSR 2 and 3 additional funding. I'll make a long story relatively short. The initial round of ESSR funding that we received in ESSR 2 and ESSR 3 equated to approximately $525 per student that, per student that we had in the district. So it was about $1.3 million. A number of school districts got together because those schools that received an insignificant amount, although 1.3 isn't insignificant, but to what other schools got, significantly insignificant, they got together and they pushed the governor's office and Ohio Department of Education to at least try to establish a minimum threshold that all schools would get, and that minimum standard was $1,000 per student. That's what's included in House Bill 129. So our district, which received approximately $525 per student, is going to now benefit by another $475 per student, or approximately an additional $1.1 million. And that will take the form of, in the shape of, ESSR 2 and ESSR 3. So it's kind of around 1 of ESSR 2 and 3, and around 2 of ESSR 2 and 3. Those funds have a specific use, as you recall, related to ESSR 2 and 3. They cannot be used in a situation where we credit the general fund with that money, and we can do anything we want with it. You know that there's a detailed plan out on our website related to the spending of ESSR 2 and ESSR 3. Some of it can be used for expenses that, you know, are applying to COVID at this point in time, that we can re-code from the general fund into this fund, but it's going to be an insignificant amount, you know, 100,000, 200,000 at most. So it's not going to be something that goes into the general fund that builds up the health of the general fund, and it would prolong our particular five-year forecast. So we heard about this happening. I received an email spreadsheet of how the calculations were made. That was prior to Christmas. And we haven't really heard anything since, other than what Nasa brought up today and what Tom brought up today. So I think I included that in one of my updates to you, that, you know, we've learned that we're expecting to receive an additional, you know, $1.1 million, but haven't heard anything since. And so I go back to, again, it's not here, it's not tangible, I can't count it, I can't touch it. So I, I don't, there's a part of me that wants to be very reserved about saying that we can expect to see $1.1 million. Whenever I'm notified that it's on its way, meaning, and typically how it'll work is we have to spend it first, and then we request reimbursement. So it just doesn't arrive in one big, you know, envelope with a million-dollar check in there. We actually have to go into the system and work through our CCIP, identify what we're doing, and then spend the money, and then request reimbursement. So until I'm aware that we get the go-ahead, that you can go ahead and do that as a district, and that we will reimburse you, I will notify you. The hope is, is that we know something certainly before the end of January. But I wanted to bring that to your attention. The other thing I wanted to mention is, although you did not see a spending plan, nor did you approve one, because I didn't finish it, I do have the overview of the spending plan. So through the month of December, I wanted to let you know that we are approximately $91,000 ahead of plan. Our revenue is still under-planned by about 182,000. That has to do with the real estate taxes that I mentioned to you before, that, you know, real estate taxes were paid after the cutoff date. So they're at the county auditor's office, they will flow in probably this month in January. We receive an advance in January, one in February, actually, we may get two in February, and then the settlement will come in in March. But the expectation is, is that we will negate that negative difference that we're seeing there. And on the expenditure side, we're about $273,000 under plan. So we're, we are pretty much where we thought we would be, at $91,000 for the first six months of the school year. That's not going to have a dramatic effect on the five-year forecast. That's not going to adjust the bottom line very much at all. If we do receive that additional funding that I believe that we will get through real estate taxes as a result of the increase to appraised value, and the increase in new construction dollars that we're slated to see, which was part of the information that the county auditor gave us through the tax budget information, it could potentially be another 280,000 for the calendar year, so January to December. For us, the six months of that period would be about 140,000. So with all that being said, I do believe that we're going to end this fiscal year better off than we thought we would be, but not by a whole lot, possibly half a million dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's not going to, although, better to be ahead than behind plan, certainly, that's not really going to alter our financial trajectory that you've been presented with in the five, in the five-year forecast. So that's a conversation that we're still going to need to discuss about where we're going from this point in time, related to that.
And Paul, I think 282 with the new construction, we're not going to see that till second half 2022, correct? Because that doesn't take effect. That'll be second half 2022, so it'll be next fiscal year.
No, well, I'm sorry, some, some of it will, depending on when that new construction hit the books, hit the tax duplicate.
Right.
But I believe, from what I've seen, at least what we got from the county auditor, is the bulk of it took place prior to June.
Okay.
So we should see, we should, but I don't know when, when the money shows up, we'll know. But we should see it during the first six months, more so than anything, yes.
Thank you. And we have existing funds that would qualify for ESSR, right? So as soon as we're able to submit, we have something to submit, correct? Or do we need to spend something?
So, and I'm going to, I'm going to yield to Mike here, because he's been very much involved in the ESSR money. The ESSR money that we rece, well, the ESSR money grant, for lack of a better word, I believe we have to spend through 2024. We had like, you know, four years to spend it.
Right.
So we had to set up and design, so for example, right now, we have those additional folks that do the night spring. So they're being paid out of ESSR funds. That's, that's an allowable expense. So we, we hired people, we pay them to clean the buildings in the evening, and the idea was, is that we would continue those people throughout the whole time that we had that ESSR 2 and 3 original funding. And then after that, if we, if we chose to continue, then it's going to have to be the burden of the general fund, if we want to keep that. Right now, with that additional ESSR money, it's still my understanding that it would still go through 2024. So unfortunately, it wouldn't be another situation, at least at this point, that says, well, that original ESSR goes through 24, this other additional ESSR that you're getting can push you to 26, which would allow us to then secure the employment of those individuals even, even longer.
Right.
I'm not certain, you know, with, with some of the money that some of the school districts got, I don't know how they will be able to spend. I'm talking about 10 million, 12 million, 15. Some districts got a significant amount of money. I don't know how they'll spend that in, in that short period of time, you know, what amounts to three years or so. So I don't know if that'll get extended. I'm hoping that it does, to allow us to better utilize those funds. But as of right now, it's, that, that's all that we know on that. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add, sir?
We're still waiting to hear some of the information from the ODE in regards to how that money is going to be dispersed, and if there's certain setbacks within that.
Okay.
It, it is, it is restricted. It's not a situation where it's a, somebody just dropped off some money, and you can use it any way you want, so.
I mean, they specify and limit it to what we can spend it on.
Correct, very much so. And, and we, you know, we will follow that, you know, there's, there's not going to be any gray area. It's going to be black or white, as to how we do that. These are federal funds, and I certainly don't want us to be in a situation where, well, it sort of could have, maybe was, kind of, and then find out later that that was an inappropriate use. So we don't, we want to make certain that it's, if it can be used for this, we're going to do that, and if it can't, we're going to make certain that we don't bleed over into a gray area that's, well, we, we thought we could, we're sorry. That, that's, that's not an appropriate stance.
And we're looking for money to pay back.
Exactly. Because we will wind up paying that back, so. Questions, comments, concerns, anything at all? Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you kindly.
Nancy, I turn it over to you for your report.
Great, thank you. As you know, COVID cases have been consistently on the rise in recent weeks, and over winter break, we monitored the community transmission and staff cases to determine that we would return to in-person learning as scheduled. The Board of Education and our administrative team are committed to doing everything possible to provide in-person learning for our students, and we wholeheartedly believe that this best supports our students' academic, social, and emotional growth, and certainly their well-being. We continue to implement the following layered mitigations that we've been, strategies that were in place prior to winter break. And during winter break, we did deep clean and sanitize our buildings across the district. We know that the current trend can put, you know, our primary goal of providing in-person learning at risk, and so certainly appreciate the comments of our parents this evening about working together. While many have differing opinions about COVID, the consensus has been that it's important to keep our students in school. And we ask for our parents' assistance and support as we work together to do everything possible to maintain that in-person learning. We ask parents to please review and reinforce the importance of following at-home mitigation strategies, including mask-wearing, the hand washing, distancing, both at school and at home, you know, so reinforce those things with your child, so that when they come here, they know what's expected. If your child feels ill or exhibits any symptoms, please do keep them at home. Please work with your pediatrician regarding any medical recommendations for your family, and then be prepared. Due to our staffing shortages, the district may be compelled to ask parents to provide things like transportation to and from school, or even possibly to pack a lunch if we were to see significant shortages in any of those departments. I know that these are trying times, and we had all hoped to leave COVID behind us in 2020 and 2021, but it's flowing into 2022, and our actions together will be able to keep, you know, our students safely in school. Thank you to our staff, our administrators, our students, and certainly our families for all of your efforts. You know, we, we appreciate all that you do. And as I said, our goal is to keep our students here, and, and that's what we're going to continue to work towards every, every day. Recently, we received a letter from the Ohio Hospital Association, and this was signed by nine hospital presidents and CEOs, including our partner with university hospitals, the Cleveland Clinic and Akron Children's Hospital, commending educators on the hard work that they're doing each day to keep students safe and in school, and recognizing the importance of in-person learning for the cognitive, social, and emotional development of children. With the rapid spread of the Omicron variant, they also encouraged maintaining masking policies until more students get vaccinated. The hospital organization asked for everyone's help to make it through the coming weeks. And we did appreciate, you know, their recognition. The hospitals have been a significant partner for us, especially, like I said, university hospitals that's worked with us on, on quite a number of our initiatives. I did want to highlight for our parents, a little bit about our attendance letters. I received an email from some parents. Kinston and all public schools in Ohio are required by House Bill 410 to send out attendance letters, and I know sometimes this is a contradiction when we're telling you to keep your children home if they're not feeling well. When students reach 30-plus consecutive hours, which equates out to about five days absence, of absences in a month, they do receive a notification from the school. This is part of a state program to inform parents of attendance policies, and it reminds them of the importance of having students attend school, that attendance is essential for students, for school success. Over the past several years, Kinston and schools across the country encourage parents to keep their children home if they feel sick, or they're exhibiting symptoms of illness. The attendance law went into effect in 2016, before the pandemic, but we certainly remain responsible for upholding this legislation. And so we understand that COVID has created extenuating circumstances that may impact student attendance. But please understand that we are required to send out those letters as well. So, you know, it's not that we're just trying to create more aggravation by sending those home. So, you know, be kind to our administrators when you do get those sent home. We get it, but we're required to do that. And so we'll continue to follow what we need to do as a school, but again, if your child is not feeling well, please do keep them at home. I want to thank you for supporting our Nutrition Services Department. I did see Mr. Mendez in here earlier. But your children can benefit from free lunches provided through the end of the school year, in the upcoming month. The middle and high schools will begin a breakfast program as part of the free lunch currently being offered. And I just wanted to share some fun facts from the Nutrition Services Department. During the 2018-19 school year, last full year before the pandemic, a total of 129,279 meals were served all year. As, as of the end of December, we only need to serve 1,932 more meals to meet that total, and we're only halfway through the year. District-wide, 63% of students are eating school lunches, an increase of over 36%. That equals nearly 1,000 students eating school lunches daily. The highest percentage of participation is at Kinston Intermediate School, with 70%. Kudos to our Nutrition Services Department. They're doing a tremendous service of providing lunches every single day. And I know Mr. Mendez just walked back in, in the room, but we appreciate all the work of him and his staff on a daily basis. So really, they've done a great job, and, and we appreciate all of their work. I do want to point out that we are getting ready to welcome the class of 2035. Seems hard to believe, but 2035, as our kindergarten parents will be soon here with their, with their students, we are looking forward to hosting Kindergarten Parent Information Night on Monday, January 31st, at 7:00 PM. We are holding this event virtually with individual registration appointments scheduled after the online registration is completed. So a link to this event will be posted on the Timmons and district web pages prior to the event. So please look for that information. Can't wait to see the kindergarten students that'll be joining us, and hopefully, some of the pandemic issues will be behind us when they get here.